Rick?
Yes, sir.
I'll say, yep, thank you. Good to go, Rick.
Good to go. It being 7:03, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Situate for Tuesday, April 7th, 2009. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we have an agenda, and I know of no adjustments to the agenda, so motion, please.
Move to accept the agenda.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is accepted. Do we have any walk-ins? I understand we have at least one. I saw a whole bunch of hands. Who do we have on walk-in? I know we got Mr. Moran or Morin?
Correct, Moran.
Moran. Mrs. Banger. Okay, great. So, just a reminder to review all the rules regarding walk-in. The point of walk-in is to identify matters that are either immediately time pressing or can be very easily solved, and if neither of those, what we're likely to do is just quickly map out a path to address the situation, which could involve consultation with additional boards, commissions, committees, or town hall, or set up a time to come before us again in the future. But we're not going to be getting into any significant back-and-forth of more than five minutes on each subject. Okay, so, Mr. Moran, why not? You're closest to us. If you could please come forward and just briefly identify yourself.
Mr. Moran, 15 Buckwood Lane. We've had an ongoing problem across the street from me. The town has permitted a junkyard on the Paper Street. I live across from this junkyard. Since 2005, we've been trying to get Neil Duggan to get rid of this stuff, this trailer. He sent a few letters with no fine. He definitely voted for a $25 a day fine for storage trailers, and because it wasn't enforced, my neighbor's been involved in, they added a boat, a junk car, and many other things. They created a real mess across my house. It's affecting my quality of life, my values, and this is town property. This is the Paper Street. How would you like to live across from it? And I can't get the town to do anything about it. So, if my name is signed petition requesting that the selectmen transfer the end of Coab Ave to the conservation board versus my plan. Maybe the conservation board can help clean this up. And if that's not possible, I'm here to ask you tonight, how do you plan to clean up this mess for this non-town property?
Okay, thank you. Certainly well within the five minutes. I appreciate that, Mr. Moran. First of all, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, Mr. Moran, with all due respect, the town is not permitting a junkyard, okay? So, I just, I know you're probably upset about this. It's ongoing. It's the first time I've seen it in preparation for tonight, but I will assure you that the town is not looking to create junkyards throughout the place or enable people to do so. I, again, I understand there are a lot of things going on here. There are legal ramifications, and the town has to step so, tiptoe around, and if there's a private right of action, that's not for the town to deal with. And again, I'm not saying that's the case, but I'm saying you have to expect that. But I will agree with you that, obviously, seeing things like this is certainly annoyance. It's a nuisance, and, you know, I haven't had a chance to read Mr. Duggan's email, but I suppose that Mr. Duggan I've dealt with, and he's been nothing but upboard, aboveboard, handling everything diligently and attempting to do it. So, I, and again, I'm not saying you made any comments that were disparaging, but I will say I've served with him for a number of years, and he's done a wonderful job. So, I think you've got to be very cautious, and I know the irritations is there, and I think we have to address that, and we will, okay?
His letters are attached to that folder I'm giving.
Excellent. Mr. Agnew?
Two things. First of all, that's not town property. Paper Street, just to take the speaker, you know. Secondly, junk bylaw, there's some strict parameters of junk bylaw, just somebody has a three-year line or something else, it's necessary to leave this junk. Oftentimes, that's a matter of interpretation for the zoning enforcement office. But fact is, it's not town property. But Mr. Duggan's email today, a lot of that, he has asked the board complaints against the person who had that trailer on the property. And he's not on the property.
Mr. Duggan?
Just to clarify, I have sent, since I started aggressive enforcement in September, there's been some resistance. I have sent two fines. I sent four certified letters, the last one to the storage trailer. I heard from Mr. McGuire yesterday, he is in the process of having it removed, and it sounds like before the end of the month it's going to be removed. I also have my final option, is to file a complaint in court, which is a criminal complaint. I've already made the determination, it is not in violation of the junk bylaw. Junk bylaw requires it to be 375 cubic feet of junk. A plow may or may not be junk. There are a lot of plows sitting in driveways in Situate, which is very hard to tell. As far as I'm concerned, without further evidence that this thing is junk, I can't call it junk. Boat in yard is allowed. Unregistered motor vehicles enforced by the Situate Police. You can have one, but you can't have any in your front yard. So, if this is a violation, it echoes in Situate Police. The storage trailer is being aggressively prosecuted right now, and I guarantee it will be out of there. Once somebody, he has family fathers, and I don't want to, I'm sorry, I, take it back. As we, there, he has issues that we all have, that I believe, he explained something to me, without, you know, we all have families, and people are sick, or people are elderly, things like that, a lot of those lines. And I, it's the sort of thing where the resistance can be because, hey, I don't want to do it, or, you know, I just got some other things going on in my life. But six months or seven months where I started aggressive enforcement to remove a very large structure built with this stuff, it's going to happen, but I know Mr. Moran's not fast enough, but it will happen.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing here is, and I was at the Conservation Commission meeting last night as, in my capacity, liaison of the Conservation Commission, and Mr. Moran made a nice presentation to CONCOM as well. It's a very interesting idea, and that might be an avenue to pursue in the future, but right now, at least on my part, I'd like to continue letting this process go forward. But I want to just repeat to you what I heard here, and what I get from the sense of the board, at least from Mr. Danahy speaking, is that we acknowledge this is a problem. We acknowledge that there's something that needs to be done. There are procedures that we need to follow to make sure that, for example, if we were to short-circuit those procedures, it would be counterproductive towards the end goal that you're asking for. So, we do need to follow that measured process. But I also pledge to you that we are following a measured process, and, you know, I can serve as the sort of liaison or the touch, the contact person, because you have been doing a good job talking to many offices at town hall, many offices at town hall have been looking into this, and I think let's just keep at it, but let's make sure this doesn't fall off the radar screen. I think that's what we're, that's what we're doing.
I'd like to point out that the first letter sent to this gentleman regarding the storage trailer was 2006. Do you have a copy of that?
This is in the packet here?
Yes, it is.
Great, alright.
Aggressive enforcement from 2006 to now has only been by me coming to every department in here to try to get this cleaned up. I've written at least 20 letters, I've been to every department trying to get this taken care of. The only reason it's getting aggressive now is because I'm ready to stand out front with a sign that says town government's broken, because it isn't working for me, you know?
Gotcha.
The signatures that are signed in there are three of the abutters of the Paper Street. This is Kelly, myself, and Mrs. Kowski. You have three abutters of that Paper Street that they're requesting it be, you know, transferred to either conservation or cleaned up.
Alright, got it. Alright.
I'd also like to say that-
Can you please identify yourself, ma'am, just for the record?
Eugenia Kelly, 11 Button Lane. I live across the street from that.
Sure.
That picture you have there is a cleaned-up version, because usually there's a lot of unregistered cars sitting in the driveway there.
Okay.
Top of that. Many people didn't want the signs, the petitions, because they're afraid of him.
Sure, and that's, that's understood whenever there's petitions and neighborhood issues. Unless there's anything new, I'd like to kind of move on. Oh, Mr. Duggan, of course.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. Mr. Moran first filed a complaint, 2004, 2005. We had no bylaw against storage trailers or regulating them. We do have a zoning bylaw that says you may have a structure for storage in your yard, okay? Not a building, it says you may have a structure. It's very vague and it's very encompassing. The trailer is a structure. I opted the bylaw, because I agree with Mr. Moran, it is unsettling. I also drove around town, and I see a lot of trailers that sit there for years, they're very unsettling.
Right.
I want to get rid of them personally. My concern when we passed the bylaws approved by the AG in December 2006, when I wrote the first letter, was that this was a structure that was grandfathered, okay? And I explained that to Mr. Moran. He put it on a back burner. I sent the letter, the gentleman didn't respond. I decided not to pursue it, because I felt very strongly that this perhaps is grandfathered. At some point in time, year and a half later, I talked to town council, town council seems to think perhaps it wasn't grandfathered. I think it's still a legitimate question. I could have at any time made the call, this is a grandfathered structure. The appeal, Mr. Moran would then have to appeal me to Superior Court. I'd rather, you know, do what we can to get rid of it, call that neighborhood, and so, I got that.
Okay. Well, the only other thing I was going to say is, and again, Mr. Moran, you know, the town's trying to address it in the manner that it's going to be beneficial, but your remedies, your private remedies could be held elsewhere, and that's not a part of this board to deal with, so, and as Mr. Agnew said, it's a paper street, so, you know, that's not town-owned. Just because it's a paper street doesn't mean that the town has it. It's, you have it, your neighbor has it, everybody presumably, if you had it, has some interest in that way, and so, that's another legal avenue that you'd have to take. But it's not this board that would have to address it. But I do think, you know, obviously, they're trying to address the issues, and I think, knowing Neil, they're going to try to address the issues with the container, and if there are other issues with respect to motor vehicles, then the police will address it and we'll see to it. I mean, there's only so much that we, as a town, can do, but clearly, if we can, if hearing it's grandfathered, you know, that's another predicament, another problem, but we'll, we will certainly address it and try to take care of as much as the town can, if we can handle it at all, great. And frankly, you're not probably the only one, because frankly, it's in my neighborhood too.
A lot of paper streets.
Yeah.
Problem is, there are rights away for people to cop on, and not for storage yards. You know, he has a yacht. His property line is 10 feet from his house, and this stuff's on over, it's not on his property.
Alright, I'm going to, um-
So, that's my point, and I'd just like to get it cleaned up.
Absolutely. And thanks for coming in and for helping keep this short, but I think everybody got their point across. Thank you, Mr. Duggan, and Mr. Agnew, and Mr. Danahy as well. Okay, Mrs. Banger, I believe you had a walk-in, and can you please identify yourself for the record?
Thank you. Donna Banger, 108 Captain Pierce Road. I'm here tonight representing the Beautification Commission.
Yes.
Also, to talk about junk, but maybe on a smaller scale, we are going to be having our Ship-Shaped Day on May the 2nd, and I want you all to know about it. We'll be handing out our, we have special green bags this year, easily identifiable with Ship-Shaped Day.
May 7th, you said?
May 2nd, Saturday the 2nd.
May 2, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Hours between 9:00 and 1:00, we'll be giving out supplies at town hall, and we ask people to have their cleanup completed around 3:00. The filled bags can be left by the roadside to be picked up by the DPW employees, as is always the case. We ask people to call us in advance to register the route or area they want to work on. There are two reasons for this. The first is safety. Chief steward is very supportive of our event, and will assign an officer to accompany anyone working along roads where visibility or heavy traffic could be factors. However, this needs to be organized ahead of time. The second reason we want people to contact us is to enable us to organize coverage. We try to assign people to areas they want to clean and still address the entire town.
Donna, who do they contact, then?
More information is available. I'm glad you asked.
Because you're saying contact, so that people understand.
Yes, we have infinite information posted on our, on the town website at News and Notices. But Ship-Shaped Day is not the only opportunity to clean up around town. There's an Earth Day celebration, also on May 2nd, from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Situate Beach Association. This addresses the beach and neighborhood at Sand Hills. They are having, also on May 2nd, but it's from 12:00 to 4:00, and they're having events, a lot of events targeting elementary-age children, and refreshments afterwards. They're inviting everybody who goes to Ship-Shaped Day to come by and have some refreshments there at the Situate Beach Association. So, we want to support them as well. Also, I want to mention that on May 9th, the NSRWA cleanup of the North River Herring Run and First Herring Brook, which not only restores natural beauty of these waterways, but also makes them safer for the wildlife that inhabits them. They're asking volunteers to report to Driftway Park between 9:00 and 12:00, and will provide a cookout afterwards, excuse me. More information at NSRWA.org. And lastly, the cleanup of the harbor inside the Breakwater will happen on June 13th. Volunteers can help remove rubbish that has washed into the harbor with winter storms. They also offer a cookout for participants. Those interested should call the Harbor Master for details. The Beautification Commission encourages and supports these and all programs that contribute to keeping Situate a truly beautiful place to live. As little as half an hour spent cleaning up a beach or a roadside can make a huge improvement in its appearance. So, we urge folks to choose one of these events and volunteer.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Banger.
Thank you.
And could you perhaps give a synopsis of that to both the Ledger and the Mariner, so we might be able to-
We'd be delighted to give as much information.
That'd be great. I can just see a little box showing all these things with little dates and stuff like that. That would be great.
And I think I'll also provide information for people at town hall.
So, when people call us, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we move on to the next walk-in, I believe there's still another additional walk-in, I have a question, just procedurally, of Ms. Donovan and Mr. Agnew. Is it 7:15, we have a liquor license hearing, and we're already five minutes late for that? What do we do procedurally?
I didn't quite hear that.
Second call. We'll do a second call. Okay. So, if that's alright? Everybody fine with that? Does that need to be noted as, as in full agreement or something, or anything, whatever? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so there's an additional walk-in? Ma'am? Yep, thank you.
Eileen Jane, 111 Mann Hill Road. I've been told and believed that I'm a reasonable person. I am a taxpayer, a property owner, and a prior-appointed member of the Situate Conservation Commission, but most importantly, I am a senior citizen. I was surprised to see the policy change from last year's appointments, specific to the Council on Aging. So, here I sit. So, with that, I'm going to ask this board to consider a person who has and will explore, and define the needs of our elder population. Will continue to promote and implement services for the elderly, as she has done in the past by researching, drafting, and presenting the Senior Tax Work Off Program, which was unanimously approved by both Selectmen and the town in 96 and 97. She has experience in business administration, and has wide contacts in the community and among the elderly. She has unselfishly attended the COA board meetings for approximately the last two years. Being the mission statement of the COA is to identify the needs and implement programs to enhance the quality of life and the independence of seniors. Nita Strode can do it. So, on the basis of merit and fitness, Nita Strode has shown that she is more than competent and suitable for the position, and should be unanimously endorsed by this board as the newest member of the Council on Aging. I thank you.
Great, thank you very much for coming in. Moving on then, are there any other, any further walk-ins? Yes, please come forward. If this is about the appointment process, we do have two, or we have appointments later on this evening, if that would be a more appropriate time. So, if this is, if this is not about the appointments, then we're pleased to hear what you are going to add, but if it's about the appointment process, we're going to be talking about that later.
Well, at Nita Strode, 4 Way on a Way. I lived here last Tuesday, as you're aware, got the application, as an applicant for the COA board. I saw the agenda, and I see again that it's me, the applicant, for Council on Aging.
Yes.
That is not me.
Just hold on a second. Yeah, I know, it's not you. Thank you.
Just unable to clarify that.
It's a very good ringtone, I must, I must comment. At Boston University, I hear a whole bunch of different ringtones, and that's a good one.
Actually, I planned, I actually did plan that. It wasn't on me, but I did want to.
Nice job.
Well, in any event, pardon me, last week, you, as the chairman, had said, you would meet the applicant, you would have a discussion, and appointments would be made.
Yes.
We're changing the format, because in the past, appointments were usually made at the end of the meeting. There were two people ahead of me that you did interview, that you talked with, you did have discussions, and both were appointed. A third person was not in attendance with the audience.
Correct.
And you called them several times.
Correct.
And interviewed me.
Correct.
The two before me, there was no time factor given, as far as conversation. I was given a time factor, but I did speak very short, as you will recall. Last June, my application was in for the Council on Aging. The same routine, meet the applicant, except it was at the end of the meeting when the appointments were made. My question was, why, when you set the ground rule that appointments would be made, why wasn't an appointment made last week? Why is another scheduled? And I wasn't invited to this, obviously, I'm here because I am an applicant. My question is, why wasn't I invited? Why is this rescheduled? Again, there were two, two applicants, and one was not here.
Sure, I can answer that very quickly, and I appreciate you bringing that up for clarification. You were not invited tonight, because as you just said, we interviewed you last week, or two weeks ago, last week, last week. Tonight, the only, this is the next agenda item. The only person on is, is Ms. Rita Rosen, who was the woman who applied, and we asked to come speak last week, and she didn't show up. So, what we did is, we held off making any appointment, because both of you are applying for the same position. We thought it worthwhile and beneficial to have both the applicants have the ability to come in and appear before us and speak before us. And so, then we would decide, given the opportunity, as to who to appoint. And I wanted to give this woman, because I didn't know if she was ill, or if she was traveling that day and unable to make it, I wanted to give her an additional opportunity to come before the board, which was on the very next agenda item. This is, in fact, exactly what we did about a month ago, or three weeks ago, with the Affordable Housing Trust, when there were two individuals who had applied, and we invited them both to come in. One was unable to make it, because he was ill, and so, we waited until the other person had a chance to come before us, and we moved accordingly. So, what we're doing is, we're just trying to move as efficiently as we possibly can, yet still give every applicant a chance to appear before the board.
Well, the reason I brought this up was because the procedure is entirely different. June 24th, there were four candidates here, two for reappointment, two applicants. I mean, they were, they were, they were applicants, they were not here. The board appointed, reappointed two that were not here, appointed two applicants also that were not here. So, this person that you're talking about was not here last week. My question is, because June 24th didn't make any difference if candidates were here or not.
Right, okay.
Appointed them, and this time it was not. But that is my question.
Right, no, I'm sorry if there's been any confusion.
No, there's not any confusion. I'm telling you how it was, June 24th, and when you said appointments would be made, June 24th, that they said four people weren't here, and they were appointed.
Okay, well, I apologize, because there does appear to be some confusion, at least on my part. What we're trying to do is give every applicant a chance with, while still moving forward efficiently as possible, and that's, that's my answer, and I think we should move on to Agenda Item 3, which is exactly this subject matter, if it suits the board. Fine, yes, okay. Thank you. So, I'd like to meet the applicant. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, well, wait, are there any further walk-ins? Okay. Now, how are we doing on the 7:15 PM liquor license? They're here. They're here? Is Ms. Rosen here? Could we just quickly go to it and get her? If it's, if it's okay with Ora, could we go ahead? Thank you, John. Yeah, so I will move on to Agenda Item 3, if we could. Ms. Rita Rosen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, as you're probably aware, first of all, can you please identify yourself?
My name is Rita Rosen. I live at 8 Richfield Road Extension in Situate.
Okay, great, thank you. As you might be aware, we just ask applicants to come forward and briefly just say a few words and provide some background information, so we can get a face link to the application, and perhaps some of us have questions of you, or maybe not.
Sure.
But just, if you could just say hi and tell us what's going on.
I'll just back up, Mr. Moran, and tell you that I was not notified last week. I was not notified by mail or telephone, and because of the superb Comcast service in Situate, my computer was down again.
Okay.
So, I was not here.
We apologize for that, yeah. And that's exactly the sort of situation why we rescheduled.
Thank you.
To allow any inadvertent miscommunications.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience.
I very much enjoy being in Situate. I've lived here for many, many years, and I've always volunteered since I moved to Situate in the early '60s. Historical Society, bicentennial beautification volunteers, I'm a registered nurse. I love my seniors. I educate at Wampatac After School Program. I really feel that I could bring a lot of experience and fresh ideas to the Board of Chairman and the Council of Aging. I have a lot of experience. I feel that there's a lot of things that I could do to keep the seniors active, productive, healthy, and safe in Situate, and that's my reason for applying for this position.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ms. Rosen. And we will be, for Ms. Stroud and Ms. Rosen, we will be making appointments as Agenda Item Number 9 later this evening, now that all the candidates have appeared before the board. Thank you all. Okay, it being 7:30 or 7:15?
7:30.
We are now going to have a liquor license hearing for Oro Restaurant LLC at 146 Front Street. Do we need to read the legal advertisement? Sure, I'll read it, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Thank you, Mr. Danahy. The Board of Chairman, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 7th, 2009, in the Selectmen's Chambers Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass. at 7:15 PM, now corrected at 7:30 PM, to consider the application of a Common Vicular's All Kinds of Alcoholic Beverages License by Oro Restaurant LLC for the premises located at 146 Front Street, Situate. The premises consists of a forty-six, 4,670-foot square foot, first-floor dining room with two front entrances slash exits, one side entrance for receiving, and one rear entrance exit. Board of Selectmen, Richard W. Murray, Chairman, John F. Danahy, Sean Harris, Joseph P. Norton, Anthony V. Vignani. And it was dated Thursday, March 26th, 2009, in the Situate Mariner Legal Advertiser. Thank you, Mr. Danahy. Is there a representative from Oro Restaurant to come before us?
Yes, Chairman, good evening. Sorry, first my apologies for being a little tardy, but-
No worry, and I appreciate your patience, lending us to be a little tardy on our side as well.
My name's Martin Pomeroy, from Burncock Goodman, a lot from in Boston, who represent Oro Restaurant. You have before you the application. Jill King is the sole manager and sole member. Robin King, her husband, will be the chef at the restaurant. One thing that I wanted to clarify that I know had come up, that was with respect to the exact area of the licensed premises. They are, as described in the application. There's been a request for the exhibit to the lease, which showed an outside seating area. There are absolutely no plans for an outside seating area at the present time. That is something that we negotiated with the landlords in the future. We do think that that's a prudent thing to do. The area of where that can be has been delineated. We recognize we'd have to come back before the board for any kind of approvals before anything can be done out in that area. The Kings have been involved in the restaurant business for over a decade. Jill King's resume is annexed to the application, if you have any questions regarding that. Robin is the executive chef currently at Stella's Restaurant in Boston. He's been there for approximately the last four years. And, um, we're just here to answer any questions you may have regarding the application.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into additional comments, I just want to point out to the Selectmen that there was a Exhibit B that was added, which was the, the plan. Like that, okay? And then also, Ms. Donovan provides us with an updated, uh, cover sheet explaining potential, um, motions. So that's what we'll be considering tonight. Any questions from the board? Before I open it up to, I anticipate some questions from the public.
Just a couple of questions, I'm sure this is in the application somewhere. Size, size of the restaurant?
Uh, the size of the restaurant...
Can you please identify yourself, sir, just for the record? Since we have a lot of people here.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Robin King.
Yes.
I live at one thirty Brendan Road. Respect to your questions, sir. The restaurant will be approximately a hundred and forty seats, but we will be starting off at about a hundred and fifteen. I believe that we've already addressed the square footage. But it will consist of, roughly to start out, about a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty seats.
And, if I may, Mr. Kim.
Of course.
Type of restaurant, only, only, and that's a difficult question to, to answer right off, but what is your intention as far as, uh, serving, what type of food?
If I may, I've printed up a bunch of tentative menus, just to answer that direct question. Uh, the idea...
Absolutely, you can distribute it anywhere.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thanks. The idea of the menu, um, is very straightforward in the aspect that, uh, I grew up in Situate, and my idea for the cuisine is doing the perfect thing. Focusing a lot on local readers, local fishermen, local fish, local meats, vendors, so, so, very cultural. You know, just really, not so much limiting to one type of cuisine. All diner, all brunch, all meat, or something like that, a little something further.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I just had one, if I can find it, it was, it was in the backup, and it doesn't mean, I was just curious, I've read it all, and... You refer to a vanilla box.
Yeah.
In the description of improvements.
Well...
My father had a restaurant one time, and I'd never heard that before.
If I may, one more time, um, basically what I've, what I've done is, the vanilla box is essentially what we will be working with, for what I brought through. Because once we actually gave the vanilla box, this is the build-out. So, when Hamilton presented the vanilla box to us, and we went out and hired a national restaurant designer.
Oh, so you refer, so vanilla box is the generic footprint with the walls, and then...
If you're a vanilla man, I got some good...
As you can tell, I'm everything, I like everything.
But please, if you'd like to take a look, we have a plan.
Okay, Mr. Harris.
Robin, so the footprint, as I see now, the Welch Company building, that will stay the same?
Absolutely.
Your intention's not to make it any larger?
No, no, not, not at all. All, the only work we're doing is basically a build-out of the restaurant.
If I may, just, just a seeking clarification, because it deals with footprint, is this essentially the entire first floor of the existing structure, or is it half of the first floor, or what's the sk, what's the, purely informal, I'm not asking for, is it one-third, or is it...
It's certainly not all of the first floor, um, it's, it's a good chunk of it.
Yeah, okay.
But we're not going to...
No, that's fine, because I just needed a little at-home scale beyond the square footage for me. I was just gonna ask, Sam's gonna say that, then it looks as though that there may be, whatever's gonna be in the front of, on Front Street, retail or what have you, uh, but your restaurant primarily is gonna be coming off the back end near the parking lot?
Correct.
And facing, facing that direction?
Correct.
And the hours of operation that you're seeking for, for the liquor license, what I didn't see that, on the, what are the hours that you're looking for? Attorney Pomeroy?
I mean, it's, that's somewhat in flux, I don't think we're looking to have any restrictions put on the hours, and I'm sure you can appreciate it's, uh, tough economic times, so Robin's gonna do whatever he can to, uh, make the profit there, obviously, but it's, it's a restaurant, it will not be intended to be a, you know, a late-night bar or anything like that, but hours of operation are still what's, still somewhat in flux. It's gonna depend on, on demand and what people would like down there, so. In terms of the license itself, we prefer to have that issue, you know, without restrictions on hours, until we know for sure what's going on.
How many, how many seats are you looking for in the bar, bar area, the lounge area? Which, I had...
The bar lounge area, the actual bar itself is going to seat, uh, roughly between twelve and fourteen people. And there'll be sort of a lounge area, cafe, if you will, that will seat the traditional kind of that. Whereas, and that will certainly be the large, uh, the lounge area. We're gonna be very wine-driven, you know, to our food, to our company, our concept of, you know, it's so much fun to be able to cook up a different kind of wine, and, and with wine, so I would say that a predominant amount of the details, hopefully, will be wine. One day that we have a special ingredient for, is on your Mondays or Tuesdays, uh, we're gonna offer basically a base menu, paired up with wines. Brilliant local wine creators, local wine makers, all around, stuff like that, who'll actually, while you're dining, describe their wines, describe how they make it, why it's piped, which is, and also, that'll be really interesting, different, and, uh, you talk...
That's right. We're going back to the hours again, uh, not to attempt to restrict it at all, as the attorney pointed out, but, uh, there has to be some hours put on the license. I mean, it's just, two o'clock, I mean, one o'clock. You know, you, you see what I'm saying? We're not gonna give out a two o'clock license here. Uh, even though, I suppose legally, I think we probably can, it's not gonna happen. So you're gonna have to, I think, and I'll just suggest this, come in with some suggested hours that you'd like to operate, because I don't intend to vote for a blank grant. So I mean, yeah, and, and two o'clock license, I ain't gonna have, you know, I'm not gonna vote for it, but, having said that, I don't wanna put you on the spot necessarily tonight, but if we're gonna vote this, you better come up with some hours.
Again, it's something that's a little bit in flux, but if you, I mean, if, I mean, if you asked them to pick an hour today, and Robin and I really haven't specifically talked about an hour that would go on the license, but if one o'clock was acceptable to the board, I mean, one o'clock would certainly be acceptable to them.
I think the other, the...
No, go right ahead.
The other restaurants in, in the harbor are all one o'clock now, I think, they don't stay open that long, but I think the license... Eleven for you?
Can you please just identify yourselves, so we can...
I'm Aaron, I'm the owner of...
You have an eleven. I think everyone else has a one, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you, thank you.
I just have a procedural question for me. When I was reading through all this, um, I noticed your, your, your letter from the attorneys, Rebecca Peterson, was, um, dated November twenty-first, two thousand and eight, and so I was reading through, and it says, "We previously discussed lease for the premises and the process being finalized, that all makes sense, and please do not initiate going through this process until the lease is finalized." Is there a, a reason why you put a letter in before the lease was finalized, then you ask us to sort of wait? And why not, is, is there a...
We coordinated...
I'm not an attorney, I don't know any ins and outs of this, but it just seems, why didn't you just wait till the lease was finalized and then do it then?
We, we, we had coordinated that with the town, it really was, we had hoped to have gotten the lease signed shortly after we had prepared all the application materials and submitted them, so we could have been on a little more accelerated timeframe.
Yeah.
The lease negotiation simply dragged out longer than we had anticipated, and that was, that was the main reason for that. We don't wanna schedule something and then have to put it off for two months.
No, that makes sense. No, I just wondered if there was a, um, end-of-year deadline or change in regulations you're trying to, that was under the tent or something?
Oh, okay.
How many liquor licenses are there available in town based on our population-based quota?
She has approximately twenty-five, I believe, and that's, that's all alcohol beverages, wine, beer, um, well, wine is different, it's different.
Yeah.
And actually, that number also goes in clear, that is, that's out, that's one, that's on the, that's on the...
Okay. And there's one available?
One available for all alcohol.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. And what is your approximate timeframe? Because you do say somewhere through here that there's other processes, other boards you need to be going through and so on. What's your rough timeframe? You anticipate being able to open your doors?
As far as the timeframe to open the doors, I'm really shooting to be open by mid-August. You know, as we all know, I mean, circumstances may arise, but that's, for me, the sooner the better.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions from the board? This is not your last chance, because I'm sure there's gonna be some audience questions, and that might stimulate additional thoughts from us, but any questions right now, offhand?
No.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wants to say anything?
I'd like to say something.
Sure. Can you please identify yourself?
Sure, my name is Evan DeLudie, and I am the owner of Stella Restaurant in Boston.
Yep.
And I'm very proud to say that, um, Robin King has been working for me for four years, about a month and a half before we opened, and has been the example employee from day one. Has just been a remarkable person to work with, and, um, I just wish him the best down here, and, uh, if anybody has any questions about his integrity or his representation of my restaurant, not even as his own, was quite remarkable, and I think he would be a wonderful, and Jill as well, would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood of Situate, the town of Situate. And I also live in Halmouth, I live only the next couple over, so I'd be, uh, very excited to be joining them for a beer and a, I'd eat, so.
Wine. Wine. Or wine. Wine.
A nice bottle already.
And a nice bottle already.
Okay, thank you. I will say, uh, sir, thank you for coming down, and, um...
Thank you, Jim.
I've been at your establishment myself, so, uh, got some good credibility there. We have received a number of letters from various people in town, and I will just add that, um, you know, expressing various comments, but every single letter we receive does speak to this individual's qualities, and the, the training and the background and all this sort of stuff, so the, the questions that people have have nothing to do with, with character or integrity, or the, the type of establishment or anything like that, so regardless of how this is headed, your comments are, are well-taken, and I think everybody in this room is unanimous in, in echoing that aspect of this. But it's good to hear it directly.
You know, obviously, I haven't seen any of the lenders, the chairmen, but, um, you know, coming, this is a very difficult industry.
Yes.
You know, at times, positions, even that executive chef can be short-lived, and, you know, it's just, um, it's nice to see somebody like, you know, Chef Robin here to extend themselves and, and work it out for, you know, four years, it's quite a long time. It happens to be, you know, uh, pretty tough business to work in, so.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, yes. Thank you for being patient.
Good evening, my name is Robert Brooks, I represent the owners of the building and community of Mar-a-Lago LLC. And we're here, uh, actually, to support the petition for the license. As you know, the Hamilton Company has taken, I would take, a very expensive and extensive renovations and preservation of this building, and we feel very strongly that a quality restaurant that Mr. King is proposing will be a cornerstone of the building and allow the financial viability of the whole property and the whole development. Parenthetically, I'd like to add, as I walked in tonight, um, I believe when I did report it, I'd been in Situate for a number of years, but I hadn't met Mr. King before this evening. You know, I walked in, and Mr. Kim was on one of my little employees, uh, twenty years ago. I've known him for a long time, and he was a good kid then, and I assume he's a good operator now, based on the representation of the owner of Stella, and so we, we hold hard to, like, uh, hope that he will approve this license application.
Thank you for your comments, particularly appropriate on opening day. Mr. Harris.
Jill Orion, I'm, I'm just double, uh, Robin, I'm sorry, just going through a second time. You guys must have been TIPS certified. How often do you have to do that?
Every four years.
Okay. I just, I didn't see it in here, and I...
TIPS, uh, and Star Stakes, one.
All right, okay.
And if I may also, uh, once we form a staff, um, for front of the house, one of the initial process, um, for all staff that will be serving alcohol, is that we're actually gonna bring someone to the restaurant and make sure that everyone is TIPS certified, not just one manager. Basically, the way it goes is that if you have one person who's TIPS satisfied, that's satisfactory. But we feel so strongly about it that once we do have a, a front-of-the-house staff, we're gonna bring someone down to make sure that every single person is TIPS certified.
Question for the attorney, if I may, again. I don't recall, and maybe because my memory's not great, um, but was a restaurant part of the original plans for when this, when the renovation was proposed?
I'm the construction coordinator.
And I do remember being very happy when you guys came in with the, and by the way, it looks great, and...
Mr. Brown is here.
It looks great, and I'm very, very pleased with the way it's coming along and the revitalization, but I'm curious about whether a restaurant was part of the original plans.
I see wine and Campbell's, I'm gonna change it. My recollection is not the greatest as well in terms of the timing, but I believe when we first came before either this board or the planning board, I don't remember the exact dates of that, but at that point, I do not believe a restaurant was part of the plans, and if it was, uh, at that point, I'm not sure that everybody knew about it, it was still probably in the early stages, but, excuse me, if you know.
Okay, great, thanks. Sir?
My name is Jay Cole, I am one of the, you know, the, so I'm from Harbor, and, um, I've submitted a letter to the behalf of, of, of several of the restaurant owners, the Harvard as well, and, um, submitted that letter in the opening, um, to read it. My intention is to take up an hour of time right now, presently. My thoughts, my family's thoughts, and any of the restaurant owners, um, I don't know how those thoughts have been submitted to you, I think that our collective hope is that you've taken our efforts into consideration. If there are any questions you may have of us, because the issues we brought to you, then now, uh, we have the, the, the...
Great, thanks for that. And we did receive your letter.
Right.
So I just wanted to return to you, yes, we did receive your letter, and certainly I read it, and the others as well. Mr. Harris?
Now might be a good time to mention that, uh, I see a lot of familiar faces out here, and, you know, I have talked to different people, and the, the fear of another restaurant in such a small town, summer season's short. And, as I, you know, I've been thinking about it for the last week. I almost look at a restaurant like this, Jay, as a way, you know, yeah, it may compete with, with everyone, you know, all the other restaurants, but at the same time, I would like to look at a restaurant like this as another draw, to bring that many more people into the town. I, you know, I, shame on me for not going to your, all your restaurants is, you know, more than I do, but I don't leave Situate too often. I mean, we have plenty of good restaurants in this town, and I'll make an effort to even go more, but I just look at this as bringing more people in. And if someone were to come from a few towns away, and they go to this new restaurant, and the line, or whatever, for whatever reason, they don't go, well, they don't have far to go, they can walk to your restaurant, or go in the back to the meal wall. That's the, kind of the way I look at the restaurant business. I, I know you may not agree, and, but that's, it's a little different than maybe some other businesses, I, you know, like, that's just, you know, I, I've been tossing around this for a few days, and that's my thoughts on it, unless I hear something that changes my mind in the next few minutes, I, you know, like to hear from anyone.
Sure.
I agree with you. I, I have been owner of Riva for a year, and I, anybody who wants to come in and open a restaurant, run a restaurant, my hat's off, my hat's off. My main worry here is not so much, I think it was addressed right here, that, that building was not meant to be a restaurant. What happens when they go in and establish themselves, and then somebody wants to go and disappear, which is a quarter mile on the street, built by another restaurant, that is just as big as one here proposing, like, in a declining population of Situate, in the economy that we're in right now, I had my best year ever this year, and I lost mine. So, and I won't, I'm not ashamed to admit, I lost mine this year. Am I gonna go wander? No, I'm not. But I could if... But I could if the town is not careful in who and what they allow to happen to that in the town.
Other questions on this vein from the board? Okay. Sir?
Hi, this is Chairman Neil Larson. I actually own a software company...
Are you a dress?
I'm sorry, 46 Woodland Road, Situit.
Thank you.
I actually own a software company up the road and right up in Norwalk, in the Office Park at the end of Grove Street. We often bring people in and we really do have to go out of town to have a really nice place. I think that the gentleman, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, was very much correct. This will draw people in to Situit. I eat a lot of the restaurants around here and I'm happy to go there, but they're not, they don't draw you in and I apologize if I've not eaten at your restaurant since you've taken over ownership, but I will.
I don't need to apologize.
But I do believe that you're absolutely right. This will draw people in. People want high-end restaurants like what Robin is doing. His talents are excellent. His food is outstanding and this is the kind of thing that this town really, really needs. They can't settle for mediocrity anymore. We are too far out of the way. We need to bring people in as an attraction and not just be part of the highway. So since we are off the beaten path, I think we really need to go with high-end stuff like what Robin is doing in order to draw people into the economy.
Okay, thanks for that. Other comments?
Well, I, Mr. Larson, I would only beg to differ. I don't think there's mediocrity in the restaurants here in town. I think they're well done. I also would agree. I understand, Jay, not only your plight, but other people who've submitted documentation, both through representation as well as their own letters. And I think, you know, our position just for tonight is whether or not a liquor license should be issued. And if somebody's coming in with credentials to open up a restaurant, we are in a position of looking at that to see if whether or not their application is reasonable. If it is, then it meets the four corners of what we as a Board of Selectment are obligated to do in licensing through liquor license. If it wasn't, then I would be inclined to say no, we're going to decline it. So, but on the other hand, I think we as a board walk a very slippery slope if we are to begin to enter into an area or an area where we are going to begin to limit the type of businesses that are going to come in and because it becomes very arbitrary and capricious. In this case, we could say no to Mr. Robin and, I'm sorry, Jill, Robin and Jill, rather, but I guess I'd have to turn the clock back a year ago and then say, well, why should we allow that restaurant or why should we allow this restaurant and so on and so forth? We could turn this into another area, forget restaurants. I mean, there've been two real estate companies that have opened up on Front Street, so now we have a lot more real estate companies. You could turn it to lawyers, frankly, because you get a lot of lawyers and they're great to bash. So I...
That's right. I agree. So I guess the slope that we're running, and this is why...
I'd go to limit that.
I guess the reason why I say that is because our function, if we begin to do that, we walk down a really bad road. My feeling is that competition will weed that out. I want everybody to be successful. I'd like to think Sean's version of it's going to bring in more business because people begin to say, hey, look, there are a whole bunch of restaurants, we can go here, we can go there, so on and so forth, will work. I hope it doesn't go in the other direction, which means that it could actually affect other businesses, but at this point, I don't think we as a board can try to determine that because we've got an economic situation which is bad to begin with. They're taking a chance of trying to open a restaurant that may, you know, not succeed. I hope it does. I hope everybody succeeds, but I just think that if we were to decline that tonight, just based on that alone, we would be wrong as a board to do so because then we're going to be subject to any business who's looking for some kind of licensing and I think that puts us into a really bad position. So that's why I, looking at it, I have read your letters, I've actually read Mr. Warner's letter, I've read, talked to, you know, his attorney, I've talked to, other letters have been submitted and I have to say that, you know, you know, I just hope, you're right, that there's enough to go around for everybody. That's, that was my position, but I will say, with all due respect, Mr. Larson, it's, the restaurants are not mediocre.
All persons, right. Mr. Norton?
Six months ago, or whenever it was when Mr. Brown came in as the new owner of the building and explained to us his plans and what he planned to do and the renovation that he planned to do, we, I mean, we were, give high praise to Mr. Brown and we thanked him very much for coming in and turning that building that was starting to run down faster than we'd like to see, turned it into hopefully a crown in a harbor. I guess it'd be very hypocritical, I think, in my part to, to now say to him or to the owner to the building, well, we thought it was a great idea, but now we don't because we're not happy with something. So I'd have a hard time when I think back about the enthusiasm we had for businesses going into that building and to see that building renovated, to vote against something that they're proposing now. It's just, and I echoed what other board members have said, where do you draw the line? Is it real estate agents, is it banks, is it sub-shops? I mean, it's very difficult unless someone comes in with a flawed proposal or someone comes in with a character background that is highly suspect, felonies involved, et cetera. It's very, very difficult legally to turn someone down and this application is just the opposite of that. The, the character of the, of the, the new owners appears to be just the opposite of having a bad background, but rather a very good background, a respected background. So that's my thoughts on it.
I just have a, thank you, Mr. Norton. On my part, I came in and I still haven't made up my mind yet. I've been torn in both directions for some of the reasons Mr. Harris stated. And I just want to make sure we vet a couple other angles that I just need answered and I want to hear from the rest of the board about this and other people. I too have spoken to many people, received the letters and so on. I'm with Mr. Harris regarding the competition aspect and thus I hope that the letters we received are, are not able to predict the future, but I do think this could potentially serve as a magnet and help bring people in. I know at various times when I've, various rare occasions when I've eaten in other towns, I've discovered restaurants that I didn't know existed because I'm going to one place and I see another place. So I think that actually can work. But I do have a concern about, and Mr. Agnew, I forget the exact legal wording, but the benefit to the town or the, for the good of all mankind or whatever that phrase is. You know what I'm talking about?
Well, the purpose of a liquor license is to serve the public. Board deals with no need to provide any more services to the public than theoretically can turn down licenses.
Okay.
However, speaking of slippery, slippery slopes, there's no more slippery slope than the ABCC. And if you vote for the ABCC, they've got to say, how many licenses have you turned down in the past downtown? How many have you accepted? How many licenses do you have down there five years ago? How many licenses do you have now? Which are obviously, we all know much less because we have five or six years left. So you do run a risk, I can never guess, but you can't turn down a liquor license for zoning reasons because that's only going to the field's decision. You can't turn down a liquor license because competition, people definitely, you say, we turn it down because it's going to competition, we don't want people to compete. We've got to lose.
Okay, now regarding the zoning, so if we were to say no because it isn't zoned or something like that, right, then you're saying that will get overturned?
Correct. It's only going to the field's...
And if we say yes, and then there's a zoning issue that comes up later that prevents the restaurant from going in, then...
There's no license.
There's no license.
You won't actually issue, I don't think you'll actually issue for license, have them pay for it, sign off on the license until there's time to defend all of this.
Is that right, Kim?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's very interesting to me. So we have, we have one...
It's subject to that, but you're not going to release the license until they've received all the necessary permits, whether it's only going to the field, for the health, conservation, playing, whatever I have to go to the...
Okay, because here's my personal, here's the thing I'm rolling around, is we do have a number of restaurants in a 300-foot radius of the new building.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We do have a number of restaurants in this, in this radius and we have one liquor license left to give. And say in three months, someone wants to open a restaurant up in a relatively unserved, underserved village, North Situit, Hammerock, Greenbush, then we no longer have the latitude to give them a license because we have used up our quota.
That is true in terms of the, the quota, however, as we did or as we reported, we agreed, went through the legislature and got another license for Situit. So you petition town meetings to ask for another license if you've got such a great idea, you've got a real project coming in.
We can do that?
Yeah, anybody can do it. You petition town meeting, town meeting says yes, it's a great idea, submit to the legislature, legislature, bang, bang, like that, it's 200 million, and you can get a license out of it. Been done many times, it's been done here once that I know of.
Okay. That's my question. Other questions from the audience? Mr. Aronberger, can you please identify yourself?
Sure. Bill Aronberger up here tonight, the past Millwall Restaurant, O'Malley's. Bob Warner, I think has submitted a letter to unfortunate, he's out of state, Steve Warner is here, as is Walter Thomas. At the outset, one of the things, the purpose we're going to speak to is, you know, to serve the public need, which I think that's a discussion I've brought about, and certainly in no manner is any questioning of the skill or ability of Mr. King, that my clients feel are very finely qualified. It's more of a question to get to the, well, one question I'd like to ask a little clarification if I could, to counsel, is I heard, I was just trying to get the number of seats in the restaurant, in the bar. I heard 150 and then I heard there's certain bar seats or whatever, what's the gross number of seats? Because my reading of it was 175 seats. Is that correct?
So as we through the chair, could you please answer that?
140 seats, I believe, in the application. I think their current plans are 115 seats.
That includes the bar area? Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you.
One of the, the briefly, entirely, to pull from that, I agree with all things the board say about free competition and all these, even though we are in unprecedented times with jobs lost, in particular Rosemont, but the chapter 138 is a different provision and it's based on the need to serve the public need for an adequate number of places for which the public can contain different sorts of beverages. That's what the statute says. And at least I've been in town, grown up in town my whole life, and contrary to one of the prior speakers, I'm quite content with all the various regulations in Situit and restaurateurs, so I think you do a very good job here. And in line with that, at least between Tito O'Malley's, there's other issues to get to the public need. Right now, there are four in the harbor property that not include Mr. Malby's restaurant who's here, but by the way, there are four getting established with a full liquor license. From my observations and what my clients are telling me, there is existing additional capacity in these restaurants. And so the question really what the public need is here. One of the, the Board of Selectment's attention, one of the relevant cases which appeals court has discussed is the Valerie case. And a couple of criteria in going directly to what the public need is, needs to assess what the public want and the appropriateness, necessity of the location of this liquor license. I think we've got some discussion before, probably are some places in town that are probably underserved by the virtue of having liquor available with food. Secondly, under that case is to actually get in, to actually look at this and to see, you know, what are the views being have in terms of the location of the locality relating to that. We have, all they have been written to the public record, I know there's several, several letters which we have, at least from the opinion of the people who are at restaurant tours in this, that there isn't a public need for this president. In this unprecedented time, between Tito O'Malley's and the Millwall Restaurant, employ over 230 people. And I would assume if you wouldn't be other licensed liquor establishments in the restaurant town, probably more than several hundred people with existing jobs that derive their licenses from it. And with the feelings of my clients that the public need is not there, it's a matter of the fact that it is going to diminish the patronage of their respective restaurants to some degree, in all likelihood caused the loss of jobs in the typical economy which already exists. But the backable point in, to, I'd ask the board to kind of separate, obviously anything that's improved in Situit Harbor is very much in the wants and needs of the town and I certainly, I certainly agree with that. But to compare different types of establishments that come in there, in the case of a liquor license, there's a very specific statutory provision and it's directly tied into need, proximity, there's four licenses in the immediate, basically on the same street, there's at least one other license, two other licenses in very close proximity. So my client standpoint, we respectfully request the board not grant to request a license.
All right, thank you, Mr. Aronberger. Sir?
Hi, my name's Dan Keith and I'm attached to Red Rose, the chairman. I'm in favor of the licensee, now Robin and Jill, the whole, I mean, it's a prediction to speak for themselves. I was a business owner in Situit years ago as well, in Southern American Care Systems. I like our restaurants in town, been in them a lot. And I think that from my look at it, there've been several studies by the United States Restaurant Association that show that when you add restaurants to the mix, more people come, it becomes a destination to buy a restaurant, go to the movies, there's a lot of collateral opportunity that is created as a result of, including this economic time. You've got investors that come here, buy a building that needs to be fixed up and they do it at this time. And you've got people who need to take a risk but start a business in town. Yeah, there's going to be some effect initially, but I think in the event that as times go up, in a rising tide, all ships will rise. And so I think it's a great idea. I think it will help all of the restaurants. I think we want to become a destination for, for a place to keep ourselves short and I think it's a good idea for the liquor license, which is a very important business component of making a restaurant successful.
Thank you. Will it be open for lunches as well or is this an evening-only establishment?
Our thought process out of the gate is to open up strictly for dinner and then as we grow, eventually we'd like to start offering a Sunday brunch perhaps. But my, our thought process is, let's open for dinner, let's do it perfect, get that, perfect, then let's do brunch, let's do it. Because I've opened a couple restaurants now and I've done it the way I just discussed and I've done it the opposite way with, let's open for lunch, dinner, brunch, breakfast, everything else, and it just, it's a catastrophe.
Can I ask one quick question, Mr. Aronberger, to follow on something? He said, Rick, you said if we vote to authorize this or approve this tonight, we don't actually award the license until they're all ready to go?
We won't, we won't hand over the license until they have all the necessary permits. So therefore they can't operate, obviously without having that license on the wall.
Right. Now, say there's some unforeseen snafu, completely not due to anything, anybody in this room, all right, bolt comes from the sky, what have you, and say it takes them five years before they open their doors.
I don't think you'll be around that.
But I'm just talking, I chose, I chose, I chose an intentionally absurd timeframe just to make, just to make my point, is we still, that license is essentially off the table for future applicants. Is that correct?
Although I think that there comes a point in time, and I can't tell you when that is, but it comes a point in time when you can say, this is being, I'm not too long, if somebody's...
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have all of these legal problems, it isn't a big deal.
Yeah, yeah.
All over the Massachusetts state.
Okay.
And we'll back that license petition, or like I said, you can always, but if somebody comes forward with a proposal that's that good, you did it, I teach great, if somebody comes forward with a proposal that's that good, I don't think that'll be a problem. forward with a proposal that's accurate, I don't think county's going to have any problems. And I know the license, the legislature can't ask.
Yeah, right, okay. All right, Mr. Norton?
Just, I use my question.
To respond to that for one second, if you want. License is renewable, as you know, so if it were a situation where there was a problem that could not be corrected, the license would have to be renewed when the application for renewal was submitted. I mean, we anticipate that the license would be issued, we then would have to go to the ABCC, have the ABCC approve it, but we can't make use of it until we receive our building permit, have built the space out, and been issued a certificate of occupancy.
Because we could have a problem from that January 1st, when they have an exercise for current license, how do you renew a license that's an exercise? So, that, they may end up having to do, and we'll expect to check the town out over the time, the man that has to do is to be applied for a license, but can probably only a lot of time.
Well, Steve, I was just going to say that we, the city board has held status clearance as far as when other restaurants, you know, construction, to get a better timeline when they're exactly going to be open. But that, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Norton, do you have a?
No, I think my questions were just in that exact area. I'm just, would you like a motion or?
I just want to, this is obviously a subject of great interest to many people, so I just want to make very sure, since the rest of the agenda is relatively brief, I just want to make sure everybody's got a chance here. Mr. Collins?
Walter Collins, 194 Front Street. I'd like to see the town doing gentleman pass down the harbor, and that's an existing restaurant like Reva that didn't have a liquor license, so an existing entity that was going on, and apply for license to get a license for, or maybe to teach the Reeds, or something like that. Restaurants that don't operate or close and reopen official license rather than to an existing, build an existing location, than to bring in a new entity that didn't exist before, I think would serve the town better. As far as, just to remember what you said on the, I was outside, I didn't hear it all, but as far as maybe, I'll call it, if you call permission, will not accept any application unless the lease is complete and final by, it could have the contingency of a liquor license.
Yeah, okay. All right.
That's, that's what I'd like to say.
Thanks, Walter.
Well, I'd take that point just a bit further, that if I'm hearing Mr. Collins correctly, that you couldn't submit, even apply for a license, the ABC, until occupancy privilege was issued. Is that correct? Is that the way you understand?
No, I mean, historically, thousands of restaurants have been, applications have been submitted to the ABCC while constructions are ongoing or even permits are being pursued. That's, that's commonplace.
Not the architecture, I wasn't saying that. I'm saying the lease has to be complete and final.
Okay, the lease.
But that was lease, it can't be a lease that's still in negotiation.
You're set.
It can be accepted usually by the town.
You have a signed lease.
And we do have a signed lease. Yeah, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw. All right. Other comments? Mr. Warner, can you please identify yourself, even though I just identified you?
Steve Warner, 250 R Front Street, Millwall, with a handover. I'd like Jay, Jay's got a restaurant over Reva. We've been down the harbor and kind of seen that dynamic throughout the last 25 years. We opened in Millwall from 1984, and the summer, the summer months for us are very good. Most years, we get the winter fine, but the last year anyway, it's very difficult. The economy's not, not great, and we've been through those periods before, 1991, a few other years. And we, we make money in the summertime, but for eight months a year in the harbor, we compete, and we compete for every meal. And I don't think, I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think that in any year in the harbor that we've been there for 25 years, with the seven or eight months in the wintertime, we have broken any. All our money comes from that three or four month period. Some years, we hang on by our fingernails until April and May come, the change of, the change of time. We can actually gauge our, gauge our volume on the hour that is increased in the spring, and people come out and they start, they start visiting our restaurant. We think, we think that, that there is ample need in the harbor. Adjacent to our property, we have Reva, we have, actually, we have Teal Mallies on the other side, our own restaurant, just down the street a little way, we have Bin. And it's our feeling that an additional restaurant, maybe not in the summer, maybe not in the summer, but certainly in the winter, will, will move. The current 25-year customer base that was built up, and we think it will severely, we think it will severely hurt us. That's one of the reasons that I'm here. Brother couldn't make it tonight, and we submitted a letter. Talk about the same.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. As far as the letters being read into the public record, are they, someone mentioned that that was important or requested, and are we able to just say?
By submitting them.
By submitting, they've become part of the public record?
Public record.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure these letters just didn't go to us and we read them, but they are part of the official packet or whatever. Okay. Great. Mr. Warner, and I just, this is also directed to Agnew and Ms. Donovan. If I'm understanding right though, regardless of whether individual board members believe that this may serve as a magnet or not, competition is not part of the grounds to award or not award a license. Is that correct? All right. All right. Mr. Orinberger?
I'd amplify, like you said, it's a curl of that, but standard is public need.
Right.
The board, after doing all the evidence, the number of liquor licenses in the area, they can find that there is a public need, an establishment that's on service. And that is the standard upon which a license is granted under the statute.
And public need, I understand, is, can be different from competition.
Right.
Absolutely. Sir? Once again?
I want to clarify my understanding of this liquor license. If this liquor license is granted, there will be zero available. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. The question, the comment was, if this license is granted, there are zero available in town?
That's mine.
Zero. Annual all alcoholic license.
Available.
Annual all alcoholic.
What would still be available?
You know, if applied for a CD, you know, but yeah, CD would be available.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does answer my question, but if the trend of the population in Situate continues to decline over the next five years, it's part of the board that a license has to be revoked. Is that correct?
I don't know about that. That's a good question.
I read that.
No. I never heard that. And I, and I honestly, I read in some of the letters about the population decreasing, and I, I don't know where that came from, because everything I've seen, the population's increasing.
I think it's.
It's 18,000 when I got here, I think it's still 18,000.
20,000 by the most recent.
I think everybody agrees, though, the population is not exploding and going, which is the main, which is the main point. Whether it's going down by 1% or up 1%, it's bouncing around 18 plus or minus. Mr. Paley?
Yes, I believe we have one.
Can you please identify yourself, sir?
Norman Paley, 50 Eli Avenue. I believe we have one restaurant in Situate that holds a license currently closed. And I know the board in the past has frowned on having a license out there that is not being revoked.
And that's a separate issue, which, which may or may not be addressed by this board in the future. Is that correct?
That's correct. Currently, that establishment filed bankruptcy, cannot, while it is in bankruptcy, cannot revoke that license.
But thank you for bringing that forward, because that's, that is a lurking question out there.
I thought you would have.
Yeah. All right. Further questions or comments from the board or from the audience? All right. Can we just hold on for a second here? All right. Any questions or comments, or how's the board want to proceed?
A motion, if you want, unless, unless you want to talk further.
Sure.
Motion.
Who would like a motion?
Go ahead, Joe.
Ms. Donovan?
Steve, what you said here was incorrect, and bring up that there's hours do need to be prescribed. And that is something that if a future, if it's granted, the applicant will come back and there could be adjustments, or they would request an adjustment, but they do need to be.
Okay. So regarding the hours, I would like to, before a motion is read, if we could just have a conversation about the hours, perhaps someone from the board could suggest some hours and then bounce it back and forth.
I just would think, mirror the, the hours of the other restaurants in the harbor.
Well, we have different hours for different.
Well, we have one that's, closes at 11:00, the rest of them close at 1:00. So, I don't know, I, I'm guessing that the opening hours are pretty much the same during the day, is 11:00, 11:00 AM in the morning until.
And I, before we get into this, I just want to make sure you have every opportunity here. Do you want to decide, try and decide the hours now, or you and your client, or do you want us, do you want to think this over for two weeks and we can put you on again?
We would propose.
I'm just giving you the option.
I appreciate that. Thank you. 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Okay.
1:00 PM?
11:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Sure.
You go with that.
Now, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to cross every T and dot every I here, just for the purpose of discussion. We have another restaurant in town, though, that ends at 11:00. So one could argue, and I'm not necessarily making this argument, that we could go for whatever closes first.
Now, we can complicate this all night long.
Well, no, but I just, because we don't have.
The easiest way, Rick, Mr. Chairman, would be for the, if the restaurant that closes at 11:00 is interested, to come forward and we'd extend the license to 1:00, rather than.
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect. That's, that's a perfect, good option. All right. Did you hear that, Aaron, though? If you, if you do decide, the board will entertain shifting hours for your, your restaurant to conform with the other restaurants, and that, that'll be up to you to come before, so we'll entertain that. Okay. Further questions or comments on the hours? Okay. Mr. Donovan?
No, I guess if everybody, I was going to, initially proposed during Monday through Thursday at 12:00, and then to 1:00 on Saturday, Friday through Sunday. And, but, because if it's more wine, I'm thinking, you're not going to be drinking wine from 12 till 1:00 generally. Well, I don't know about you, Rick.
July 1st. After July 1st, I'm sure you will be.
I was going to propose that as my, the hours, and they wanted to go to 1:00 on the rest of the.
I might make it the same as the other restaurants.
But I think it's be consistent with the other restaurants, and I'd go along with that, though.
All right. Motion? Certainly.
Would the board of selectmen vote to grant a common vicula's all kinds of alcoholic beverages license to Oro Restaurant LLC, 146 Front Street, for a 4,675 square foot premises with a first floor dining room, two front entrances and exits, one side entrance for receiving, and one rear entrance slash exit, seven days a week from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM? Further, subject to a successful inspections by the building department, board to help and fire upon.
I'll second that. Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? Is there any further discussion from the audience? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 All against? So it's 4-0 in affirmation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming in. Thank you all for the good discussion.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, that was agenda item number five, so we're going to return in just a quick minute. Allow people to.
I took a break. You were not, you don't want to go.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Please, please, the door is open.
Anne, could you, Ms. Burbine, could you please close the door? Mr. Collins, please close the door. Okay, agenda item four is a, is the poll hours for the upcoming town election.
Motion? Please. Move that the board of selectmen vote to set the poll hours for the town election as 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday, May 9th, 2009.
Second that? Oh, whoa, wait.
May 10th, Sunday.
Yeah, May 10th, Sunday. Are those the shortened hours? I thought there was, I thought Bernice wanted from 9:00. Those, we want the shortened hours. Oh.
Yeah, excuse me. I'm sorry. You all received a memorandum from the town clerk earlier this week. She has asked the hours on 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, May 9th. I apologize.
Sure.
So if we're going to amend.
To amend the hours? Why, why are we amending?
The hours from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, all wages are uncompensated.
Oh, okay.
And by math, it's a maximum, or minimum, excuse me, of four hours. She would like a whole, she would like a six hour.
Leave her memorandum, discuss cost savings.
Yes.
I didn't see it, we just got.
So Bernice, Ms. Brown's recommendation is 9:00 to 3:00, and May 9th. So that motion was not seconded, so.
I could.
No. So could you just reread it?
Yeah.
I didn't quite hear what you said, so could you please reread it?
Move that the board of selectmen vote to set the poll hours for the town election as 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, May 9th, 2009.
I'll second that. Motion second for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? So that's unanimous, 4-0. Thank you all. Okay, we have, agenda item number six is an update from Mr. Jeff Rosen regarding the Massasoit Community College ongoing efforts regarding a, a small campus here in Situate. You might recall, board of selectmen may recall that upwards of a year and a half ago, we had Mr. Rosen and several other members, particularly from Massasoit Community College, come in and make us a presentation about their interest in opening a satellite campus here in town, focusing on marine engineering and technology, as well as other aspects. And at the time, they were interested in potentially setting up temporary operations out of Gates Intermediate School, which was visited and discussed, and potentially moving forward. But since that time, there's been ongoing ups and downs and ins and outs of plans, and Mr. Rosen is here before us to give us a brief update for information to the board of selectmen and make a, make a proposal regarding a potential location along the Driftway. And with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rosen.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again this evening. As Rick, as Mr. Murray has pointed out to you, we've been in pursuit of this for well over two years now. Some of faint heart may have, might have given up already, but we, we have strong support throughout the community and also from Massasoit Community College. I'd like to make note here that recently, there have been some rumors of a cessation of interest on the part of Massasoit Community College in pursuing this, this opportunity, and that is completely false. I recently had a meeting with Dr. Wall, the president of Massasoit Community College, and he indicated to me that if anything, they're more interested now than they have ever been in the past because of the role that such a campus and effort may have in retraining and in creating new jobs and newly trained professionals in these particular areas where, in which I believe, everyone believes that there's going to be great new opportunities in the future. So Massasoit Community College is still on board. The last time I left, you gentlemen, you had recommended to me that we needed to have a nonprofit organization in place to shepherd this effort through. We have, in fact, accomplished that. I'd like to say also with the help of Mr. Orinberger, with some legal advice, and we have. And we have a nonprofit organization in place, and we are in the process of getting that certified as a 501(c)(3), which means that we will be able to accept tax deductible, or I'm not sure exactly the legal terms with it, but people will be able to, and corporations will be able to donate to us as a nonprofit organization, will reflect so on their taxes and processing of their financials. We have on this organization, which is now called the Marine and Environmental Education Alliance, we have got a stellar Board of Directors. That Board of Directors includes Mr. Ed Lofgren, who is the owner of 3A Marine and is very influential in Massachusetts marine trades, retired representative Frank Hines, who is very enthusiastically involved in the project, as well as Jack Conway. So, we've got some leading citizens in the area, we've got quite a bit of business contact, as well as influence on our Board of Directors. The Board of Directors has charged me as the chairman of the organization with locating a viable option for a location. We cannot go out and raise any funds, we cannot convince anyone that we're for real until we have a footprint. We have, in fact, designed a preliminary building. We designed it for a particular site, that site did not work out, we're going to have to see how that building works on another site, but we have got architectural support. And thus far, I'd like to make sure that everybody understands that all these efforts have been voluntary with no money expended. So, all of the work that's been done has been done by volunteers. That, of course, has got to end soon, if we're going to be viable and we're actually going to make this work, which is part of the reason for having the 501(c)(3) in place. We have looked at multiple sites, those, as the chairman has indicated to you, have gone by the wayside for a variety of different reasons. But what we do have now is we have identified a site, which I outlined for you in the documents that I supplied to Ms. Donovan. The site that we're currently looking at was identified after arduous visiting of many sites in town with Chairman Murray, and we have identified a location, which is along the Driftway, very close to the train station, also very close to the marine, to the Driftway Park, that is developing so nicely along the Driftway. The site is situated right along the Driftway, it is located between the transfer station and the golf course. Most people would figure that there's nothing there, but as you can see in the overhead photo that I have supplied to you, that there is a nice chunk of land there. That piece of land has got dramatic scenic views of Fourth Cliff and the Herring River, as well as North River coming into, into the split, the entranceway out to the ocean. The site has got some limitations, as I indicated also in the materials that I delivered to you. I want to emphasize to you that in preparation for coming to this meeting, I have talked to Mr. Murray at some length, I have communicated with Mr. Agnew, Mr. Calicious, Mr. Duggan, Ms. Harbottle, as well as the Conservation Commission, and previously, a number of months ago, with the Education Committee and Mr. Banger. So, we have covered the majority of the bases within Town Hall. There's general agreement that the site may be viable. There are some barriers, of course, it backs up on the landfill. There are setbacks from the road based on the zoning, and so there are some barriers that are going to have to be, have to be overcome in order for this property to be, to become a viable site. However, there aren't any other sites left, as far as we can tell. In order for this to happen, we are going to need the cooperation of the town, we are going to need the land made available through some kind of a cooperative partnership, so that we can put up a building. I may also point out that while we have had cooperation on the town, on the part of all the town committees and employees, we're going to need more of that in order for this to be brought to fruition. We need to not find the problems and the reasons that we can't do things, but we need to find ways to get this done if the Town of Situate wants this kind of a facility within its borders. If we cannot make it happen on this piece of property, I fear that it's going to go to some other town along the South Shore. Again, Massasoit Community College is committed to this happening, and there's a need for this kind of a facility. So, what I am looking for this evening is I'm looking for a commitment on the part of the Board of Selectmen, on the part of the town. I'm looking for your leadership for the rest of the town government to say that we encourage this happening, that we encourage finding ways to make this happen, not finding reasons that we cannot do it, but rather finding reasons and ways to get this done. We are hoping for the Selectmen to give us a commitment that if, within the next two years, we can get all of the barriers removed, we can make all of the permits happen that we need, we can get all the appro, excuse me, all the approvals from all the commissions and boards within town, that the Selectmen and the Town of Situate will then make a commitment to us that we will go into partnership, so that we can go out and we can begin saying to our potential donors, "We have a footprint, we have a home." Until we have that, there's very little else that we can do. We have reached the point that we need that in order to proceed. So, I'm here this evening to ask you to make a commitment that the site will be secured for the educational facility. It fits into other plans within the town and other efforts along the Driftway. I also, again, am going to ask you to make a commitment to step up in a leadership role within the town structure, to make this a mission of the town, and something that we try to do, not something that we try to prevent.
Mr. Harris?
Do you think you have enough depth in this site? And I was looking, going back and forth, 1,500, plenty of frontage. Do you think you have the depth?
It's one of the challenges that we're going to have to address. My understanding from Mr. Duggan is that we have a need for a 60-foot setback, but that 60-foot setback could be used for roadway, as well as parking. We also, Laura Harbottle pointed out that there may be a need for a back, buffer in the back, from the landfill. And these are all things that we have to address, but there was no way between the citing of this location and now that I could get all those answers. I did touch base with everybody in Town Hall, asked everybody to articulate what the potential problems are. There are also DEP monitoring wells on the property, there is a slurry ditch on the property. All these things are going to have to be addressed. But until we have, you know, somewhere along the way, I'm going to need to come up with some dollars, the only way we can really come up with dollars is we need, we need to have a site to start with, which we have not had to date.
I could just follow up, one question, one part about that, after walking the land with Mr. Rosen. It's deceptively big. I know it...
It all comes down to feet, and inches, right?
But when you walk it, it is deceptively big, and you can see very clearly where the edge of the landfill is, and where this is, and where that is. It's, I mean, you probably know this land better than I do, but when you walk over it, and the contours of the landfill, you can see from the aerial photo, it's kind of, it's not, you know, parallel to the Driftway, there's some ins and outs of the, of the landfill. We're not talking about anything over by where the methane's burning off, or that building is, or any of that, we're really looking at the wooded area.
There's your heat.
That's going to go out. But it is really a large area, and I think it was Mr. Agnew, or someone, or maybe Mr. Banger, someone said, you know, exactly where it goes obviously needs to be figured out, but probably more towards the east or north, to the right of this particular thing. It's a really big area, when you walk around, it's like, wow, I had no idea.
Definitely, you know, and it says 1,500 feet of frontage, and so, just by looking at the picture, if it's 1,500 across, it's got, I don't, hopefully, it's deep enough, it's a good spot, it's, you know, I mean, you're not far from the Driftway Park, and depending upon what type of programs you have, you know...
All right.
Mr. Norton? I think Mr. Rosen said that, you know, up till now, there's no silver bullets, there's no bullets that'll kill this deal, and I certainly am more than willing to have him move forward on this plan, on this piece of land. Having said all that, the word commitment sometimes can be a scary one, because we, I don't want to be sitting here three years from now and say, you know, except for someone else, "The board committed," and by committed, they meant $500,000.
Right.
And that's my question, I guess. Not that the money couldn't be raised, but I mean, to commit to any amount of money, Town of Situate's money tonight, based on what we're going through now with budgets, would be a very difficult commitment. I mean, I can commit up to a certain point.
As I said to you, Mr. Norton, when I first came here, is that we do not expect the Town of Situate to expend any money on this effort, with the exception potentially of revenue lost through leasing the property to somebody else.
Probably, that would not be, and that's admirable, believe me, I mean, that's very few people come to us with that type of a deal, so...
Right.
You know, having said that, having you said, having said that, I have no problem making a commitment tonight that the Board, that the Selectmen, and hopefully the Board supports you.
And to follow up on the commitment, the part B is, and just to reiterate, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure I know what I'm committing to here as well...
Sure.
Despite hours of conversations and walking through the woods with you. But it is good that, and I commend Town Hall for all, for you and Town Hall for having discussions with those people, but you're also asking us to make, to make it a, continue to be a town-supported, and make it very clear that we want to help DPW, we want to help Neely, we want to help Vinnie, as they work through with us. And that part is what you're also asking, Mr. Banger?
Yeah, Mr. Rosen, hello. The, several times it was mentioned, not be part of the problem, but be part of the solution, or of course, that effect. I guess I can't sit here and easily say that we have resources in doing work on this particular project.
Nope.
But in terms of helping expedite how work can get done, but we don't have engineering resources to go out and do geographic surveys, or help with moving rocks and stones and make trees down, whether it's just sort of, so...
Right.
With that understanding, I mean, we're very ready to help engineer, help engineers or whatever, on the board.
And Mr. Banger, it has been, is that consistent?
That is exactly what our expectations are. If we cannot put together the resources to do the site prep, the architecture, the, all the legal work, et cetera, with this site, then this will not happen, and we do, we are not asking the town to expend those efforts. Needless to say, as anybody else doing work within the town, when I go in to talk to Mr. Banger or his staff, I understand that the town is making an investment in their time, because you're paying their salaries. However, we would not ask for the town to do anything by way of site development or engineering, et cetera, other than the inspections that it normally would do, and the support that it would normally give to a development within town. We, you know, needless to say, we understand that if this process does work, the property will remain in the, in control and ownership of the Town of Situate, which is currently where it is, and we would be tenants on the site. We also do not expect the town to have any expenses in putting up the building, or putting in any of the other, the other installations that would be necessary to make this work. If we cannot raise the money through sponsorship, if we cannot find the support within the industry, within the state and the federal government by way of grants, then this will not happen, and we are not asking the town to make those investments. However, I do want to point out that if this does come to fruition, the Town of Situate stands to benefit from it in many, many ways, including financially. So, I think that we, you know, we're not asking for money, we are asking for very, very important support.
Mr. Norton?
I'd like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that through you, you send a letter to the departments in town, and I'm tossing this out for discussion, outlining our support of this proposal and asking department heads to do whatever is within their means, under the current budgetary restrictions, of such a way that leaves them, not so much an ultimatum to the department heads, but certainly let them know that we're in support of this project.
Okay, that's a good idea.
That would be my thought.
I'm fine with that, and I could work on the wording with Ms. Donovan and Mr. Agnew to make sure we don't inadvertently tie anyone's hands, you know, one way or the other.
I think given the fact that you're now, it seems a way we can...
Yeah.
And they've been great so far.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so far, they've been great. Right. Mr. Harris, Ms. Donovan?
That's good, sounds good.
Okay. Do we need a sense of the board? That Mr. Norton's suggesting with a letter was enough to codify what we're doing? We don't need a motion or anything like that, just a sense of the board?
Is that okay? Jim doesn't like so, Jeff doesn't think so, that's great.
Okay.
The only thing, again, that I just want to make clear is that what we're looking for is two years. If at the end of two years, I and our, our not-for-profit have not delivered, I'll throw up my hands, and we'll go, we'll either go elsewhere, or there'll be somebody else leading this effort.
But we'll revisit it, we'll revisit it, two years. If you're $10 short, I'd hate to pull the rug out from underneath you.
Yes, but we do not believe that we will be.
If you're 1.2 million short, then maybe we won't need to convince you of the other way either.
No.
So, yeah.
Two years?
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. And thank, thank you, Mr. Agnew, and everybody in the town for your help and support, I do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And then, Ms. Donovan, maybe we could, I'll talk with you afterwards about the content for that letter. Great, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, a report from the Director of Public Works. Is Mr. Banger in the audience? Mr. Banger?
Thank you. I want to update you on one area only, and then open up for, obviously, any questions that you might have, which you seem to always have. I want to talk about Flannery Field on Hadley Road at the Hadley School. The Flannery Field remains extremely wet at the lower end after any serious rainstorm or any, any duration of even moderate rain. Now, the background of this project, that the field was, was a playing field prior to the fall of '06, but starting at the fall of '06 and through the spring of '07, there was a project put in place to rebuild that field. And then the field was put back into play back in 2007 in the fall. This was done with a contract for over $300,000 to Mass Pavement Reclamation of Hanover, a company with whom the town has done extensive, successful ventures. The work was overseen by the Department of Public Works, the Engineering Department manages, like they do any other construction project in town, with town funds. The project was a big project to cut and fill, basically, take the upper portion of the field, move it down, and put it in the lower portion of the field. That basically meant moving, and the lower portion of the field is up to six and a half feet deep of material that came from the upper portion of the field. The decision was made to conserve money, to make sure that they use as much as they could, the materials on the site, so they took earth that was at the higher portions, screened it to remove rocks and stones, and then used it to fill in the lower portions. The way that field is laid out, if you start at the top, you've got grass, and then you have about two to three inches of loam, four to five inches of sand, about 18 inches then of subbase, which is compacted material that was on the, on the field to start with, and then beneath that is an extensive gravel and drainage trench laid out like a spider work, that brings the water, that makes it through those layers, carries it down into catch basins near the parking lot, and then on across into our drain systems on the street. The overall surface was built with about a 1% slope, so rainwater that falls on the upper portion travels on down to the lower portion, and hopefully gets absorbed by the collection system and taken out of the field. What we see is that the north half of the field, the upper, if you will, the upper portion of this 1% slope, dries out relatively quickly after the rain. In fact, that was the area that was really not disturbed, that was the area where earth was removed. But the southern half, where area, the area in which the earth was placed, remains wet like a sponge, well after the rain has stopped falling. What appears to be happening is that water fills up in that lower half of the field, the loam and sand layer, but seems to be tracked, trapped by the layer below that, that subbase that was made up of earth that was there before. It's almost like it was bentonite, which is used to keep water from flowing. So, it may be that the, that layer of earth that's in there was too silty, had too much clay in it, and then when it was put on the site, it was compacted too much, so it may be just tamped down too far. What has happened thus far, in December, we rented a long tine plug removal machine, and then spread two to three inches of sand on the... and then spread two to three inches of sand on the field, and spread that back and forth to fill in the little holes that were plugged, the big holes, the deep holes, eight-inch holes, with the sand that was spread on the field, in anticipation that that would begin to aerate the field. Now it's clear that we'll need to do that two or three times in the course of the next several years, in order to get that field to be, have enough sand permeated into the soil to be able to move the water through. However, we're also going to take core samples at the south end of the field to see exactly what's going on with each layer, how far down is the water getting, and where is the water staying. It may end up that what we need to do then is cut cross trenches in that field laterally to take, cut a trench, put drainage in it, and run it off, whoops, towards the wooded side of the field to the, I guess that would be to the west, and then cover that with soil and then sod. Now, and then additionally, we'll do the plugging and the sanding several times throughout the year. So, what I'm getting to is that this field will probably not be usable after any periods of rain until we complete this work. So that means, between now and the summer, we'll use it during dry periods, but there will be cancellations of the use of that field by the Recreation Department, for the safety of the children playing in that field, because the field is basically too sponge-like to really play on effectively.
Have you talked to the Recreation, they're aware of this?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's...
Yeah, they canceled play in the field, for instance, earlier this week, because of this.
Is there a plan in place?
Yeah. So, I mean, it's a great disappointment for the planning of the use of the field, but the reality is that it, the field is not able to withstand really moderate rainstorms that be played on almost immediately afterwards.
What's the cost that we're talking about, to replug it every so often, and potentially doing laterals? I mean, the, the field itself was 300,000 to do it, what are we talking about now? For example, what was the cost to plug it in December? And what are we talking about going forward?
The cost of plug, of plug removal was quite high because of the rental of the machine. However, the golf course now owns the exact machine we want, and so we were working with a golf course, we'll use it, we'll get a lot of use, it'll get used at the golf course as well as at this field, and any other fields that we feel is necessary to, to work on. Putting down sand is relatively inexpensive, sand is not expensive, and then we use our own machinery and our own people to drag back and forth and, and do this plugging and sanding. The trench work is to be determined. It's not, it's not horrendously expensive, we'll use local contractors to do trenching. Yes?
Mr. Harris?
But it takes it offline, and that's what's crucial to Jennifer and the whole Rec Department. It was, it was such a long time coming for that field, and I have to say, and I'm not pointing fingers, but same thing was done at Central School, and there isn't a problem with that. That was, used to slope down towards Branch Street, and the contract of, by that first home, it's, it was been raised up quite a bit to level it off, and I don't think we have that problem there. It's just a shame, it's been so long for that field.
My understanding, again, predates me, but I've, I've done the research and talked with people who've been involved, is that a decision was made early on that, to reuse the soil, the native soil that was there, clean it and reuse it, but it may not have been the, the correct combination of sand, silt, and such, and then it was compacted. Now, you know, who shot John, I can't tell you, but right now, the job is to try to fix it. I agree with you, it's too bad that we're at this point, it's not something, I certainly know and much likes to go back to something that was done and redo it.
So we'll plug and help, it will help, but it might not really solve it.
Plugging will help, and we'll continue to plug it, it's the cheap solution, but it may not be the fix. What we have to do is take, do the core sampling and find out if, if the, the problem is beneath the level of the ability to do plug removal, then we really need to go down and, and work on that, so. And the, putting in the trenching and, and backfilling and putting, and we'll use sod to put on top of it, would, could move fairly quickly, but I still think, during this rainy season, we're going to see a number of disappointing days when that field can't be used.
Other questions?
If you end up plugging it out, and then you begin to, after doing that, trying to sand it, that seems to me like it's a potential two or three-year process to try to improve it?
I've done some research on fields, and, and a field that gets potentially as much use as this, needs to be plugged probably three times a year, over the course of the next three or four years, in order to get enough sand and, and mix in there to, to make it a proper field. The reason why I'm asking that is...
Really, it's definitely different from the field that, because of, at the time, when you do it for, you plug it for a year, one of the reasons to plug is, is the backup, you need the backup sand on, and you want to go through it, and it's also healthier for the grass. The reason why I'm asking is that, if, if we're looking at two or three years of trying to plug a situation that basically is, is not going to solve, and we're going to resort to trenching as the mechanism, so now we're talking about a potential two or three-year lack of use of a field, or it's going to be disrupted, do we at least say, let's get it fixed, so that we can get it done, so that next year or the year after, the field's going to be done? I mean, and then figure out what that cost is, to determine if that's the best...
We'll do plugging, Mr. Dan, he, no matter, John, yeah, if we fix it, we'll still continue to plug. So what I'm saying is, the plugging is part of the program, but the plugging isn't going to get it fast enough, so therefore, I think, because I think the problem is below the level at, to which the plugs will, will reach, and therefore, we need to go in and put in additional drainage in that, at least the bottom half of that field, and that's why I say, we'll get on that, but to be conservative, I would say that between now and the summer, you know, midsummer, it's going to take some time to get it done, but we'll get on it as soon as we can. And that's the approach, as soon as we get the core sample, which we can do in the next few days, we'll know whether or not we need to do the additional drainage, or if plugging will simply solve the problem. Okay?
Correct.
But time is really, we hear the clock ticking.
Anything else, Mr. Banger?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, I have actually a question for you, since we're talking about fields. I was approached by an individual about the, the field on Beaver Dam, up on the Little League Field, up on Beaver Dam?
Roach Field.
What's that called?
Roach.
Yeah, okay. Apparently, it used to be named after Bill Johnson, and I'm just saying names, because this is well before my time, who apparently, in 1953, started the Little League, and in 1960, this is according to an individual who approached me about this, who's been around town for a long time, it was named after him, and it has since been renamed. And this is something I've noticed, it's natural, things get named, and then 50 years later, they get, they get renamed. And this, this individual is not suggesting at all that we rename it back, but that perhaps we could put a sign up there on the backstop or something, that says, you know, originally named after Bill Johnson, who was a, you know, math teacher, football coach, founded Little League, something like that. We put a sign up there that says, originally named after Mr. William Johnson, who founded Little League, and all that sort of stuff, just so that name doesn't get lost to just posterity. And I don't know if that's your bellywick, or Recreation, but we all, I just thought I'd bring it up, since you're talking about fields, I wasn't bringing it up under...
I can execute putting the sign up, but, and in terms of, I don't know anything about the history, if, really, it should come through you guys, if that's how you'd like to have it done, I'd be glad to do that.
I think it's fine, but could we...
Just want to make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Someone else might come up and say it was named after Mr. Smith.
We have to have some documentation, I, I would imagine, that in fact, and I, I'm not saying it wasn't at all, but I'm just saying, we had, there must be something somewhere that says it was named after the Johnson, Bill Johnson. I was also spoken to by probably the same gentleman you were.
Yes.
And I brought it up, and that's what was asked of me, you know, do we, I don't think anyone has a problem with it, we, somehow, we have to make sure that this was in fact the case, so maybe you or I could get back to this gentleman.
Sure. I don't know who, who did I talk to?
Well, maybe you speak to, to George.
George, yeah.
I mean, because Little League wasn't really founded until 1970, almost 1980, unless there was a Little, Little League back in the 30s, I don't know, but...
No, it was, it was, Joe started it, Joe started the Little League.
Okay, well, how's this, just for way moving forward, just for way moving forward, I'll approach this gentleman, and have him suggest some short wording, and then I'll, I'll run it by other people who have long memories in town, and then I'll run it by various people here.
And maybe he might think about...
About five, about five or six years ago, right after...
It was named after somebody else at that time, and we had some resolutions in it, like, maybe the whole field wasn't named after them.
Yeah, it was, it was...
I was going to say, what could you do?
Mentioned before...
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Guess what, we're going to name... I'll tell you what, I'll look into it.
You, and you go, I got it better right here.
All right, so, if it's all right with the board...
Happy you brought it up?
I'm very happy I've brought it up, this, I just can't wait. I'm looking forward to, you know, when I'm no longer chair, I'm going to need something to occupy my time, so.
That's right.
All right, but if it's all right with the board, I'll, I'll dig around, look into this, and come up with some ideas. All right, great, thanks, Al.
Actually, no, Al...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask you, do we have final figures, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, with snow and ice? Now, that, that looks as though we're not having any more snow.
Yes.
I was just curious, so we can get an idea for final figures?
Hmm? Yes. 285? Okay. Yeah.
Jim, a couple of things for me.
Mr. Norton?
Uh, two things, Al, a while ago, I think we, we talked about that bus stop by the movie theater, and you made a good suggestion not to take out the no parking so much, because...
Make it a drop-off?
Yeah, make it a drop-off. In the meantime, the, the bus stop printing is still there, and I think that even makes people shy of being a, maybe you just wipe that, get that bus stop sign out of there.
We will, when, when we can start street painting, that's what we plan to do, because the way you remove it is, you street paint it out, and then you put the new street signs in, and then we'll, we'll put appropriate sign up there also, okay? Drop-off, pick-up and drop-off only, okay?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, one other. When you first came on board with DPW, you mentioned one of your projects, one of your, would be that Front Street-St. Mary's intersection by the church. It hasn't gotten any better, as we all know, it's...
Front Street-St. Mary's, where I want to put in a roundabout?
No, I don't think you, you came up with a suggestion, you just said you had a problem with the intersection.
It's a three-way stop, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you relook at it and see...
Would you like me to?
I would.
Okay.
Because it's, it's crazy.
I hate it myself.
I mean, anyone goes through that door, it's crazy.
Right. I don't go down there because of that darn thing, you know, but I agree with you.
Yeah.
It's an actually, it's an excellent place for a mini roundabout.
Maybe.
It actually is.
And it would keep traffic moving, and it would reduce accidents, and be better for pedestrians, so.
If you could look into that, I guess.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I'll come up with some alternatives.
I can't wait for another couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Al. Agenda, thank you, Mr. Banger.
Yep.
Agenda item number eight, discussion vote FY 2010 budget and articles, Mr. Agnew?
I just have...
Okay, that's my kind of agenda item.
I just wanted, Mr. Chairman, if I may, without...
Sorry, didn't mean to truncate.
No, you didn't, you didn't really, but I took down an email today, I think some, if you might have a chance to, to get it, to read it. I, I continue, as I know all, we, we all are, a concern with, with next year, and the fact that we've spent, and, you know, just about, what I'd be fearing, saying every nickel we possibly have, and, and then some, we've found ourselves in a position where we just have absolutely no, no savings to fall back on, whether it be in any of the reserves, for any of the enterprise funds, we have the snow and ice, we just heard $280,000 shortfall, we have no contract signed for next year, which the worst scenario could amount to $300,000. We found some, some of the methods of balancing this year's budget have fallen a little bit short, not hundreds of thousands, but thousands of dollars short, so, you know, it's, it's a major, major concern, I just want to bring it up, so we don't lose track of the fact that we have to be so very, very careful of how much we spend, because we don't have anything to spend.
For any money, I think, we'll come with, we'll, we'll, let's say that the whole capital is right, and you bring the water, it's like, if you, if you're okay, it'll be okay, it'll be worth it, okay? You may want to say something, something about water, or something else, but the sewer project, hold off for a couple of months, until we get to the national basis, based on the state budget.
Just to make sure I understand what's going on, though, and everybody else understands, "Town meeting authorizes, it does not require," is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not, the selectmen trying to do an end run around what town meeting is authorized?
No.
I just want to make clear, because I've had, I've received that comment.
You can't borrow without the special approval.
Correct.
In the article, it will say that, that it will authorize, or approve of the project. There's only an authorization, not an expenditure.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, it's, again, not to try to trick him with anything, but six months from now, nine months from now, if, if one of the capital items that we voted is ready to start, and it becomes more obvious at that time, that we just don't have the money to fund it, or we don't want to burden future generations over a term with the debt, we may want to reconsider that item, and I think that's a really good idea.
That's something that's, that's...
One way to look at it.
...the DPW, the record, we, we won't expend any fine budgets on the capital plan, so we'll double-plead, so maybe, I'm sure we need the authorization, or...
Yeah, that's, that's awesome.
Comments?
Yeah, well, I was going to mention another business, but I think it dovetails well with the discussion, and I raised it for last year, and raise it again as a, a discussion point, but I don't think we need to set up for an agenda anytime soon, but whether or not we should reconsider the CPC funding, you know, for future reference, we might maybe need to use that money for capital improvements for other things, and we may think about reducing it, or eradicating it for short term, in order to be able to do certain fundings, whether for capital improvements that we, we can't get to. You know, you always hear about sidewalks, everybody's saying, we need a sidewalk here, we need it there, well, we're not going to have that funding, but maybe we should think about it and discuss it, not saying we should, just putting it on the table, given the economic times, to be able to say, maybe we don't want to go down the road to CPC for the next two or three years, maybe we want to try to save the taxpayers money, but in the meantime, when it comes up to a major project, you know, we need to be able to find that source, and we can, we can approach the voters. But I think, you know, it's something to discuss and debate, again, I'm not wedded in saying I'm going to vote that way, but I just think we need to keep that on the table, given the current times, so.
Okay, Mr. Harris? All right, all right. Moving on to agenda item number nine, this is the appointments portion of tonight, and I just want to remind folks that we're discussing, or appointing, Council on Aging, this is to fill a term, an unexpired term, so there's one spot available, we have two excellent candidates, both candidates have now been before us to do the, the meet and greet, and unfortunately, we can only pick one of them, at this point in time, so, turn it over to the board, I can't make a motion as chair. Prove that the Board of Selectmen appoint Rita Rosen to the Council on Aging. Second? There's a motion, the second, all in favor? Aye. Any against? So that's a unanimous 4-0. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming in, and for applying, and for our consideration. Agenda item 10, update on the Town Administrator Search, we have received a total of 54 applications received so far, which I think in and of itself speaks well of our town. The Board of Selectmen are continuing in confidence, and preserving confidentiality, reviewing each application, and we are in the process of creating a smaller list of qualified candidates. What we are doing is, we have each given Ms. Donovan a list of the candidates we feel are most viable, and we have asked Ms. Donovan to put together a list, to partition that list, so those individuals who appear on all five of our lists, those individuals who appear on four of our lists, and three of our lists, two of our lists, and one of our lists, as a brief way of seeing where there might be common ground. We are now getting to where the list is going to get shortened, I would suggest, just as a straw man discussion, one potential way that we could move forward, while preserving the rights of the minority, people that might want one or two of those individuals, I'd suggest one way we could move forward would be to, all of us concentrate on the list, on the lists of names...